I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Can all stand, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. All right. Thank you. So our first order of business tonight is school board organization. And so my role right now is to ask for a nomination for school board chair of, from now until the next year during this timeframe. And a nomination would be made in the form of a motion. So if someone could give us a motion for more chair?
I would make a motion that Marcia Gustafson Beltate be board chair for the next year.
All right, Charlie made a motion for Marcia Gustafson Beltate to be the school board chair for this coming year. And Alicia Stendersen has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Marcia says aye as well, so that is seven zero. And Marcia, you will take over the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. So are there any changes to the agenda for tonight?
You guys gotta do a vice chair as well.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, sorry.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Charlie Baker as the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Lisa got the second in before Marcia did.
Okay.
All right, we have a person, a second. The question is...
Marcia, you still there?
I'm here.
You're in charge, Marcia.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I do a good job at this. Okay, so roll call, vote. Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you. And Christine?
Yes.
Thank you. And I say yes as well. So that passes seven zero zero. He needs to go. Sorry, we're having those wonderful Zoom from home issues here. Okay, now, we're on to changes to the agenda.
Okay, I have, I think I have a hand to consent agenda. I'd like to add the resignation of Lauren Kellay.
All right, thank you.
Effective Friday, March 19, 2021. I'd also like to move that, in this case, that we waive the liquidated damages for the early retirement.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so are there any other changes, just that one to the consent agenda? Or those?
There, I think there is someone, there's a removal of Madeline Tom for the time being. She'll come back later on, next month.
Okay.
So she won't be voted on this month.
All right, any other changes? No? All right. Okay, let's then go to our public comments and...
All right, so yeah, public comment session, we have two. This is the first of those. If you could please just raise your hand via the hand raised feature on Zoom, we'd be happy to address you. First name, last name, town of residence. For anybody who's familiar, we did change our policy on public communications last four minutes, so again, you're absolutely free to sort it out over the business report. All right, I haven't seen everything.
Yeah, okay. Well, we have another section, so if something comes up, they'll have opportunity. Okay, superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you. So on most people's minds, at least over in our neck of the woods here at school, is vaccination. This month, we were told that the president had started off with saying that he wanted all educators to be vaccinated by the end of March. Governor Sununu has also set up a timeline, and there are many educators across the state who have already received their first vaccination within this pool. Some parts of the state, they're going directly to the schools and they're having kind of closed pods. That is not the approach that this region of the state has taken. So we all would be needing to go to the athletic complex on Crip Road in King of Hampshire. And so we've surveyed our faculty, our staff, our bus drivers, anyone who works with us here and our kids and makes everything happen to get the information that we needed. We already had fifteen to eighteen percent who had already had that vaccination, whether it be just the one shot and is awaiting the second shot, or that they had been fully vaccinated already. But we have another about two hundred ten, two hundred fifteen who are looking to be vaccinated. So Leslie and I are working with the head of the program over there. And the information from our last survey, which ended at four o'clock this afternoon, has been sent over, or will be tonight, sent over to the Greater Manhattan Public Health Network. We are supposed to be getting in return some times that we can schedule our staff in. Some of those times could be on a Saturday, it could be on a Wednesday, it could be after school. It also could be during the school day as well. We want to, our goal certainly is to vaccinate all staff, want to be vaccinated as quickly as possible, and do so with as little impact negatively to the teaching and learning and extracurriculars for our kids at the same time. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. And the only thing that I can see that could be of some, a topic that we could talk about is the fact that, whether it be teachers, support staff, people from the SAU, we have a situation where the vaccine, if we have to do it during the school day, I would like not to have to use people's sick time during that timeframe. But also, there is a possibility, I think I've heard more with the second shot, but regardless, first or second shot, for people who might feel poorly afterwards, that this is an important process and that we should hold people harmless during this timeframe. But that's a request, and so if that's of interest to the board, certainly, I would ask that a motion be made for really the all staff that we have here in the SAU. Architect update, we continue to work with the term...
Before you go, Reuben, on a subject of the COVID-19.
Okay.
I think that the vaccinations and the information flow and the decisions that have to be made are time critical. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to take actions as necessary to allow staff to get their vaccinations as fully ready.
All right, thank you, Charlie. I'll second that.
Marcia?
Yeah? I can't do that. I know.
You're not a chairperson.
I'm the chair. Please, who seconded it?
I'm absolutely seconding the motion.
Thank you, Patty. All right, so Charlie made a motion, Patty seconded it, and I'm gonna do roll call vote on this. So Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes.
Thank you. I say yes. So that passes seven zero zero. And Reuben, do what needs to be done to get people vaccinated.
And that's for, Charlie, you said this school year, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Other things that are happening, we're approaching that fourth quarter. I can't believe we've come this far through the course this year. It's been a challenging year for everyone, really. But fourth quarter is coming. The weather is getting a little bit nicer, which is, which is good for our spring sports, and those signups are underway, other club activities as well. We have a survey out right now. About fourteen or fifteen families have replied already, but have until March 26th for a change of learning environment. So most of those fourteen are looking to go from remote back to in-person. There are some going the other direction. And then, so we'll keep that open, and we'll have a couple of weeks then to be able to schedule that all the way we need to. Congratulations to our girls' basketball team for winning back-to-back championships, back-to-back undefeated seasons. That's really fantastic. They played yesterday at Trinity High School over in Manchester, and they defeated Fall Mountain. Fall Mountain, though I don't know too many people over there, certainly it's to be commended, you know, they're a worthy opponent. I think they've been in the finals three years in a row, so they're consistently a very strong team. And then, we're in the throes of doing some architectural work. And so bathrooms, upgrades, renovations, perhaps some new construction we're looking into. Obviously, we've already had conversations about parking lots that we continue to plan for, a parking lot repaving here at this school, over at RMS. We have some work that we have to do to the adjacent parking lot, well, what will be an adjacent parking lot over at RMS, and several other things. We have a lot of work going on in the area of facilities. Another area that we haven't talked too much about is, as we have, last year, we talked, we brought to the board that we were going from the building trades, which is more the carpentry, to the construction trades, which gives you a wider range of occupations, electrical work, plumbing, masonry, et cetera. So we're changing that over for next year in the curriculum, and we have quite a few people signing up already, which is exciting. But we want to look at that space to make it more efficient for the work that we're gonna be doing next, next year. So that's other, some other work that we're giving some recommendations for. That's what I have for tonight.
Great, thanks, Reuben. Are there any questions for the superintendent?
I'd just like to say something, and that is, not only kudos to our girls' basketball team, but also kudos to all of our winter sports athletes. They've represented our district admirably, and I think they've given a hundred percent effort. So we had teams that didn't make it to the finals, and I think they tried to survive.
Great, thanks. John?
Yes, I second that, and I'd also like to add some kudos for David Springfield and Heather Winstag, having organized all that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion.
I'd move that we accept the consent agenda as mandated.
Thank you, John. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. All right. I guess I'll do a roll call vote, and let's start with Christine.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Aye.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. And I say yes, so the consent agenda passes seven zero zero.
Marcia?
Yes?
I wanted to just note the donation of the pop-up candidate, and I think it's awesome and wonderful, and thank you very, very much for making sure to have arranged it. As for Japia?
What about the rewarding opportunities?
Yeah.
It's really great, she went out for it, and thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so moving on to our presentation.
I'm sorry?
Charlie, we were talking about pens, and I just had a thought, because I'm a fan of girl writing, and I was excited in the fall when we were doing some of that with our other pens in the fall. So now that spring is coming, is that the intent began, is that those can step up and have pens outside more?
So Lucetel is working on that. We would have a little bit of difficulty hiring the company that did it last time because of workers. So we do have another vendor that we're trying to get set up, and to find out at a good time when to start doing that. We probably, we learned a little bit from the fall, you know, so we know better perhaps where to put them and where not to put them. I think we had, for instance, I'll give you an example, a couple right up here in front of my office area, they weren't used very often. You know, you have one or two, you know, classes, maybe the entire fall utilize that specific space near the road. That kind of makes sense as cars drive by. So there are some places that we just wanna put them in in better places. We might give more to the elementary schools, if possible.
That's a good question. Okay, presentations.
All right, so I'm gonna promote Leanne, and also Carrie to be panelists, so that they have the ability to actually do a presentation.
So as you're letting them in, I'll just kind of speak regarding both of these presentations. Leanne is their finance manager, relatively new position, she's been with us however for a little bit longer as an accountant. She works very closely with Carrie and the rest of the business department. Also, Storm is one of our student services coordinators, and so she has been doing quite a bit of work with our preschool programming. Dabbles with really every area of special education services, by and forth. But specifically, she has a good grasp on the preschool, and preschool has been something of a, something that this board has supported improving and increasing. And so we felt it was a good thing to update, especially as we have two new board members. One, to update you on an initiative that's been going on for about two to three years, and how that's been going, that's the preschool presentation. And then another initiative, part of an initiative that the business office will talk about, Leanne will talk about, which is kind of a overhauling our accounting systems. And that's a piece of a larger project that we're doing with all our communication and paper routing through the course of the rest of this year, in the summer and the beginning of next year.
All right, so Leanne and Carrie, you should both be promoted to panelists at this point, so you're free to turn on your screens, audio and whatnot, and Leanne, you're free to share your screen to run your own presentation, unless you'd like data.
I'll go ahead and share my screen. Thank you for having me. For those who don't know me, I'm Leanne Colleen, I'm the finance manager for the school district. And tonight, I'm going to provide the update on the Infinite Visions implementation, which is a project that we are currently working on in the business office. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yeah. Anyone come through as a screen share?
I'm sorry, did you say you couldn't see it?
No.
How's that? Okay, so the goal of my presentation is to explain why we're doing this project, what the process is going to be like, and what the impact's going to be. So to provide a bit of background first, what is Infinite Vision? It's a comprehensive ERP solution designed specifically for K through twelve school districts. It's a Tyler Technologies product, which is the same company that makes our current ERP software, which is called InCode 10. So you might be wondering, what is an ERP system? ERP stands for enterprise resource planning. Essentially, it's an integrated system that delivers all core business functions in one single product. So this includes financials, human resources, payroll, procurement, and reporting. So why are we converting? Tyler Technologies is no longer supporting school districts under InCode 10. Therefore, we don't really have too much of a choice, we'll have to convert sooner or later. However, InCode 10 has a lot of limitations and bugs that slow down our business functions. So ultimately, we're really excited about this, we think it's gonna be a really good thing for the business office, it should ultimately lead to a much more efficient business office. So next, I'd talk, I'd like to talk about the key benefits of converting to InCode, to Infinite Visions. First of all, it's designed specifically for schools, it's widely used by schools throughout New Hampshire and the nation. It's well-respected, and it has a great reputation for being a comprehensive, strong ERP solution for school districts. Because it's under the same Tyler Technologies software umbrella as InCode 10, the company was able to convert over most of the data for us. This is a big deal, because this is a huge part of the process, it would be very time-consuming for us to do on our own, and we would have had to do that if we had chosen a different software product. Along that same vein, it has a very similar look and feel to InCode 10, which would really help with the learning curve. As we start to learn the new software, it won't be a totally foreign product, we'll be really used to the way it looks. Another benefit is that most users will be able to access it from the web. Only business office users will need to use a desktop application. Everyone else will be able to access Infinite Visions anywhere they have a web connection, including their phones. Today, if you want to get into InCode 10, you have to have that desktop application. We're really excited about the reporting that it offers. There's actually five different reporting modules in Infinite Visions compared to the one that InCode 10 has. Ultimately, this, what this means is that we can really customize our reports, and we can get the data out of the system exactly how we need to see it. A huge benefit will be the fact that Infinite Visions offers a positive pay file process that we can put into place. This is a really important fraud prevention control, and it's actually something that TD Bank has wanted us to do for quite a while, but InCode 10 did not offer it. If you're not familiar with positive pay, basically, what happens is, anytime we do a check run, or we cut any checks at all, we'll be creating a CSV file that we can then submit to TD Bank, and they will not clear any checks unless it's on that listing. So it is a very strong fraud prevention control that we really need to put in place here. We expect to see improved automation across the board with most of our processes with this new software. Payroll processing, we're really excited about, because Infinite Visions will actually integrate with Frontline, which is our current time and attendance and absence management system. Today, we have to manually key in all the hours, words, absences taken, every payroll, which takes days. Essentially, what will happen is that Frontline will be able to talk with Infinite Visions, so that we can import and export this information pretty much automatically. So this will save us a ton of time each payroll. From an HR perspective, we'll also see a lot of improvement with both contracts and open enrollment. Contracts will have the ability to print and accept them through the system, and open enrollment, starting next spring, will be able to do that in the system as well. This will be a big improvement, because this is all done on paper with pen today, so a lot of time saved there as well. The way we're able to set up payroll will also be an improvement. Infinite Visions offers customized work calendars, salary schedules, which will help with the tedious process of doing balloon checks and contract adjustments. And it will also fix a lot of issues we have with teacher encampments. As Reuben mentioned, we'll be able to implement digital content management, so that we can scan and attach all of our supporting documentation, which not only saves a lot of time, but it also is very helpful in a remote environment. And then finally, we'll also have additional approval workflows in the system. Today, only InCode 10 has approval workflows for purchase requisitions. Infinite Visions will add the capability to do approvals in the system for journal entries, budget transfers, cars, and maybe even some other things. So in general, we're gonna be saving a lot of time with our day-to-day process. So next, I want to give you a summary of the project and give you an idea of the timeline. The real meat of the project started at the end of January, when we completed a current and future state analysis with a software team. Basically, what this process entailed is us sitting with the software team for two days, and we did a thorough assessment of our current system. We talked about how we're set up in there today and what our procedures are like, and then they explained to us what the new capabilities of Infinite Visions would offer, and we kind of workshopped what changes we want to make. At the end of that process is when they completed the data conversion for us, where they exported our data from InCode 10 into Infinite Visions. The type of things they were able to export were our static data, so things like our vendor list, our employees, all their deduction setups, and our chart of account. Things like the balances will have to be brought in later. Now we're at the stage of training and configurations, where we're doing work sessions that are three days long typically, or every other week. So they're pretty time-consuming, but this is, this is a real bulk of the project. Where we're working with that software team to set up the new system and make all the configurations, and then as we're doing that, we actually get to train with our live data. This started in May, and it will take us all the way through, it started in February, and will take us all the way through now. In phase two of the project, you'll see that there is some overlap timing-wise. From March to June, we'll really be working heavily with the data. There is some data cleanup that needs to be done, where we have to go in and manually adjust some of the converted data. Basically, because we want it differently, we need to make all those manual changes from the data that was pulled. We also, of course, have to do data validation, we'll have to do a thorough review of all the data that was converted in, make sure everything was done properly. This will bring us all the way through mid-June, where we have a whole week booked off for user acceptance testing. This is where we will have to run test transactions through every different module, to make sure the system was set up properly and running as expected. Then at the end of June, we'll enter what we call pre-production consulting. This is where we'll, we'll have a week where we can work with that software team to resolve any issues that came up during testing, and we'll also get some training on some advanced topics that we didn't get to yet. Our official go-live date will be July 1st, 2021, which is the start of a new fiscal year. After that, we'll have to do what's called duplicate entry, where we're going to have to run all transactions through both. So basically, even though it'll be live in Infinite Visions, we'll still have to run everything through InCode 10, to make sure that the financial impact is the same. InCode 10 will act as our, like, control source, and of course, we'd expect Infinite Visions, all those transactions, to have the same impact, the general ledger, our balance sheet, et cetera. We'll probably have to do this for about two months. We'll probably have to do this for about two months to make sure everything's really running properly. Then the final phase is what is called post-production consulting, where we will have the software team on hand to help us resolve any issues that might have come up. And they'll also spend some time with us to help us create any custom advanced reporting that we weren't able to create on our own. So although we're very excited about this project, I do think it's important to address some of the challenges we're up against. As you can probably tell, this is a huge undertaking between the data validation, the configuration, training, testing, running dual systems. It's going to be a huge time commitment. Also, with any new ERP system or any new software in general, you're going to have a new learning curve. We're going to really have to make sure we take time to train staff throughout the district, especially any of the staff that transact in the system besides those of us in the business office. And of course, it has potential to kind of slow us down in the beginning. We won't be able to run on autopilot for a while, so things might just take a little bit longer than we expected. Naturally, all of this will work itself out in due time. And then, of course, because we are changing the way we do things to make our department run more efficiently, we'll have to change some of our internal processes, which again, might just blow us down. So, next, I'd like to talk about what the impact will be to the school board and other staff. Hopefully, it will really be as minimal as possible. And of course, any changes will be communicated to. One change that we're already aware of is the chart of accounts. Both the location and the fund codes will be expanded from two to three digits. Also, the grant activity numbers, the federal grant numbers, will be added to the end of the string. However, the rest of the chart of accounts will function the exact same way you're used to seeing it. So I don't think this impact will be very large to you anyway. The other thing is that manifests and reports might just look a little bit different. However, they'll include all this same pertinent information. And of course, we'll be available to talk you through anything if you have any questions on how things look. As I mentioned, as we get closer to Go Live, we'll be training staff, especially those who are transacting, such as pool secretaries, other admin assistants, the admin team, and other managers. And then as far as other staff throughout the district that aren't transacting in the system, there might be some small changes too, especially in the way that they enter their time and attendance. Just because we're hoping to really have Frontline connect well with Infinite Visions and be more automated, there might just be some small changes to how they have to enter. Also, there'll be a new employee self-service web portal for all staff. We think they'll really like this. It'll be a place where they can view pay stubs, tax forms, and down the road, they'll be able to make their benefit changes. They are used to a self-service portal with InCode 10, but it doesn't have as much functionality, so we think they'll really like that. And then finally, hopefully, what you'll notice, the more efficient business office, which just means we can better serve you and the rest of the community. Thank you. I hope you learned something about Infinite Visions and what we're going through at the business office. That's everything I have to share, unless there's any questions.
Yes, Leanne. When you say "Go Live July 1", and you're also saying you're running in parallel at the same time with Code 10?
Yes, we expect to be running parallel probably all of July, maybe all of August. It depends how it goes, but we will be live in Infinite Visions on July 1st. So anything we're running in InCode 10 parallel to that is simply for verification purposes. Does that make sense?
You will be running parallel before July?
No, it will be July 1st we start running parallel.
Okay, so how are you going to verify that the results will be the same in each system?
We'll be doing the part of the process I mentioned called the user acceptance testing. We'll run some test transactions through both systems, but we won't have to run completely parallel where we're running every single thing through both.
So to help Charlie, if you can hear me too, when they bring over the balances from InCode 10 later on this fiscal year, we'll be reconciling all of that to make sure it matches the balances that we have in InCode 10. So we'll be reconciling all of that, and then when we run both systems at the same time, we're going to have to do a lot of reconciliations to verify the data.
Okay. That's what my question was, because if you go live, to me, going live means that you're using your Infinite Visions as opposed to Code 10 to drive all your payroll and everything else. And if you've got an issue, that's not the place to find it. The place to find it is before you go live.
Yes, absolutely. We will be doing a lot of testing and reconciling as Carrie mentioned.
Any other comments or questions, John?
Yes, Leanne, I just wanted to ask, I presume you're going to have great support from Infinite Visions? Are they going to have staff working with you as you do the reconciliation or the moving the data?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Throughout the entire process, we have a designated software consultant that'll be working with us. But really, there's a whole team behind the scenes that'll be working with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I think they're doing a great job. We need to do something to get the Code 10 system up to date, and if we can't update it, then we need to transition into a newer software program.
Yep.
Yep, I know, it's exciting to think how streamlined it can become.
Yeah, it really is. I'm glad you can see that.
Fingers crossed.
Yes. There always is with this sort of thing. It's a challenge, but it's really going to be a good thing.
Great. All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It was really nice to be involved tonight and give you this update.
Yeah, Alicia, sorry.
It's so hard to interrupt with all the different speakers. I just wanted to say I appreciate the presentation. It was very well presented and the visuals were very helpful. Just enough information, but not too much, so it was over my head, and I feel like I have a good understanding. So thank you for taking the time to share with us.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is Storm.
So now I'm going to do this all. We'll sit by, so Leanne and Carrie, I'll pick you guys back into the interview.
Thank you.
Hey, Storm.
Hello. I wasn't sure how that works, so I'm glad it went smoothly. Thank you for having me. Welcome, Lisa and Christine. And I'm not sure. So, Sharon, sorry.
Hey, Storm, do you have anybody coming with you or is it just you?
I'm sorry.
Are you the only person presenting, or do you have somebody else involved?
It's just me, I think. I don't think anyone else can.
You're free to share your screen how you want.
Nick? Is the presentation showing, or is it the talking side that's showing?
Yeah. So everybody can see just the presentation.
All right, thank you, Nick. So I want to talk about the Jaffrey Ridge preschool today. Our current preschool enrollment, there are 25 kids enrolled in Jaffrey, 24 that are remote, and then eight, I mean, sorry, 24 that are, I'll start over. 25 in Ridge, 24 in Jaffrey, and eight in remote. I should just read the slide, right? So typically, we have 16 students in our full-day program. This year, because of COVID, naturally, some people withdrew, and we let the number stay small. So each full-day class ended up having 10 students because of social distancing and all requirements involved in that. Our half-day classrooms can have up to 14. This year, they had smaller class sizes again for the same reasons, due to COVID. This slide shows our enrollment throughout the school year. So in 2000, you can see in 2016 through 2019, we had lower numbers. In 2019, well, 18 is when we started the full-day lottery, but then you can see the difference between 18 and 19, how there's a lot more who moved up from preschool to kindergarten. And then it's kind of evened out. The reason for the numbers going up and down, some preschoolers spend more than one year in preschool. So if they came in as a three-year-old, they may be in the preschool for two or three years before they advanced to kindergarten. You'll see next year, we anticipate back up into almost 50, I think it's 46. So when we look, starting at 2016 to now, we start with about mid-20s for how many kids went from our preschool to kindergarten, and then now we're in the mid-40s. So I anticipate next year, probably around 45% again, as far as kids who advance. So this year, we had a lot of complications because of COVID. I will say, I reached out to the preschool teachers before this presentation and asked for their input, and one preschool teacher sent me this. Her quote says, "As a preschool teacher, it is my job to create an environment that is designed to encourage students to explore, create, and question through play." So I think that really represents what our preschool stands for, to allow them to learn through play. So this year, with the social distance environment, the teachers had to become very creative in order to continue to encourage the social play. They separated materials, they had different, so in the full-day program, each student had their own bin of materials that they use. And then the half-day programs, it was the same thing, except they switched out toys during the day. So in the morning, some toys would be available, and then in the afternoon, different toys would be available. One thing that was really neat about the materials piece of separating is this gave teachers the opportunity to differentiate materials that students may need based on their fine motor needs. So if a student needed a special pair of scissors, you could include that in their materials, and no one would know the difference. Masks, students were surprisingly, it was easy. They wore masks, they followed their peers. We had one student who wasn't interested in wearing a mask, but after watching his peers, he was able to wear the masks regularly. As I mentioned on the other page, we had some student withdrawals. Seven from Ridge withdrew, and nine from Jaffrey. Of those nine in Jaffrey, four moved, and three of each town stated that they were going to homeschool their kids this year. As we know, our preschool is a play-based environment, so trying to implement an online program for preschool was a challenge in itself. So we have two different models of preschool. Once, when we went remote during the time of remote, and then once, when we had the online preschool for the kids who chose remote. So preschool was set up differently online by teacher, but they had regular morning meetings, they had some online small group sessions and one-to-one sessions. In Ridge, they had a speech, a motor, and a social group, where kids would just come and practice those skills together, any kid in the preschool. They had recorded books read aloud, and then each month, materials were sent home for them to do activities with their family or activities with the teacher when they did those small groups. Our online preschool option, this was interesting. When we sent home that survey asking parents, did they want to be in-person or remote? We were surprised at the students that wanted to be remote in preschool, but they did. So one of our preschool teachers volunteered to take on the role of a remote preschool teacher. So she has created a program where she meets regularly with her students. She also sends home materials monthly. And then she created my favorite thing that she's done. So when preschoolers went remote together, she combined some of the classes so they could meet each other. So the remote students and the in-person students were able to meet each other. So now that we're back in person, the online preschool students continue to meet with them. So they have something called a snack and chat, where a student in the classroom will host a snack with the students who are remote, so they're having some of that social interaction. And she was also able to, so originally, it was, she wasn't able to meet with them as often, but through cooperation with some teachers in school, she's able to meet with them at least three times a week online. And one thing that we've really noticed with this online preschool option is it's based on parent, what parents want to do and what they need help with. So parents will reach out and ask for things, there'll be materials provided, and then they'll work together to find the best programming for their child. New for this year, we have the full-day program in Ridge, as you know. And then, sorry, I was going to the next slide without actually going to it. So one thing, at the time of the lottery, we had enough places for Jaffrey residents to all attend. And then additional students were on the waiting list for Ridge. So in Ridge, there were three on the waiting list for full day, and then there were nine on the half-day program waiting list at the beginning of the school year. And then there were additional kids added to the waitlist throughout the school year, and most of them were from families who moved into the area. So as you know, we updated the preschool playground this year. We were looking to offer more climbing structures for kids. So on the left is the old playground. I know you've seen the new playground, but it gives a lot more different types of climbing options than it had before, and it continues to have swings. Then also, we updated the Jaffrey program, our playground. There used to be one set of swings, there's now two. They added the climbing structure, and then they already had a slide, but this one's a little taller, and then the water and sand table. Using grant funds, we were able to buy some of the latest evaluative tools. So we purchased the SELF3 preschool and the BDI3. The SELF3 preschool evaluation assesses aspects of language necessary for preschool children to meet the language demands of the classroom. The BDI is an assessment tool that is good up until age seven. Proloquodago is used on iPads, so we're able to purchase some iPads to help with students who may need augmented and alternative communication tools. And then My Big World is a scholastic curriculum that they use. This is their first year, I think they've used it as a whole, and they said that it's been very helpful. They found great success. And one thing that's nice is as the kids get older and attend our schools, they use scholastic throughout it with the scholastic news. So the lottery closed on Friday. We advertised via Facebook on our website. We followed up with families who had previously applied or reached out. We updated some lottery application procedures, so it was all done in one spot instead of having them turn materials into different people and filling out different things. We created a preschool-specific guidebook. And then there's still some concerns about the implications of COVID, but I'm excited about the vaccinations that are forthcoming, and I think teachers will be too. So as far as who applied for the lottery, this is the lottery numbers. In Jaffrey, we had 32 applicants, and in Ridge, we had 31, for a total of 63 applicants. You'll note down here that 35 students are going to kindergarten, but 24 will remain in the preschool for a second year, which impacts the numbers of spaces we have. Overall, we had 42 four-year-olds apply and 21 three-year-olds apply. So for next year, we'll have one full-day program at each school. We'll have two half-day programs at each school. We've added an introduction to foundations in addition to the handwriting without years curriculum. Foundations is something that they use at the older grade levels. So we purchased a kit to just expose students to it, not necessarily use it as a full curriculum, so they'll have an introduction to it. And then we're also looking into implementing a screening tool to administer at the start of preschool when a student exits preschool. We're finding, well, we know it impacts student growth and achievement, we haven't been evaluating it. So we'd like to start doing that with this school year. So the future, what does the future hold? We have, as you know, we'll have students on the waiting list once the lottery is pulled on Wednesday. One idea that a teacher had was to offer a monthly parent meeting group to help them with guiding, but they should be working with their children on. It'd be a good way to build relationships with the community. I've run into some barriers why parents don't apply or why they don't attend or why they don't have their kids attend once they do get into the program. Mostly it has to do with transportation and timing. So I don't know what the future holds, but I do know that parents who have kids who attend the preschool program, I feel really enjoy it and find that it's a good foundation for them. And that is all. Do you have any questions?
I just, I have a few questions, but I'll go with my comments first. Thank you for sharing this. Place. So this is really exciting to me to hear about what the things that the students are doing for our preschoolers and preschoolers. I love the, I can share about foundations and handwriting without tiers and how we're going to start introducing that in preschool so that they can just grow that curriculum. They have that early exposure, that's so awesome. I'm so excited to hear that. We've had mentioned Storm that you were reaching out to families who do not send a parent or who don't send their kids even though they were accepted. I think that's great data to track, especially if, you know, the timing is, is an issue and we can really identify that. That can maybe help us as a board consider full day opportunities in preschool programs. So I'm interested to continue to hear more about that. I was wondering specifically how many children you expect, who entered the lottery, do you expect to be placed on the waiting list?
It helps to find, there's a lot of feedback, so I didn't, I didn't hear your question. I heard everything to the question.
Oh, my question was, um. How many people who enrolled in the lottery do you expect to be put on the waiting list? I didn't get to see the numbers before you said.
I'm not sharing anymore, right?
No.
No, you're not.
Um, I can tell you. So I think in rent, I don't, I don't want to be quoted, but I think in range as far as the, okay, I am being quoted because I'm being recorded. But I think in range as far as the full day program, we have enough spaces for the people who've applied.
But some part will be waitlisted.
But there'll be several people on the half-day program that, and so one thing I find interesting is some four-year-olds or many parents of four-year-olds want half, only the half-day program, I think that fits well for their schedule and for their child. So there will be some on the half-day waiting list in all programs. I can tell you those numbers for sure on Wednesday. I won't know it until then.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Storm?
Very exciting. This is Pat. I really appreciate having that and I love an update in the fall. You know, I think, I think assessment about how things work out from, you know, what's we cross, our children need to do for families and lessons learned so that we can document that for remote. And I just am really impressed with this, the strength of our program. Like it's a very lively program, it's new and the trust that the parents have put in us to get this launched is really important. So to go then, I'd love to hear word out from you in terms of COVID and the impacts. And then I'd like to see how things settle out in the fall for attendance.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Oh, Ruben, do you have a question? Or are you just waiting?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
Your presentation and some of the slides that you talked about having to do with really, if I were to summarize it, just teachers who are innovating and reflecting on practice and continuing to make things better and better for our learners. It's great. It's, I mean, I've been so impressed in general with those teachers who are teaching remotely in the first, second grade levels, kindergarten levels and now in preschool here. To be able to really make certain that our kids are getting the social interactions that they need as well as the, what, what age-appropriate academic learning that they need. It's, and to also hear the importance, and I think that the teachers have realized the, more so the importance during this timeframe of being those equal partners with the families. You gave a couple of different examples of that to do what is best for their kids and for our kids here. And so it's, it's really neat that even in a difficult time, we're all wearing masks, we're social distancing. People are finding a way and they're doing great things for our kids, even in difficult situations.
And I really don't feel like I highlighted how awesome they are and how much they're doing. I think I missed a lot that I could have shared because they really do do a nice job with their kids.
Patty.
In the future, is this photographs, permission granted photographs or videos or give us a floor?
I was scared to use kids' pictures, even if with permission.
I get it, but it can, it can happen. But we can sit in small seats, that would be great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thanks very much, Storm.
So I'm going to send Storm off back to the attendee side, so everybody say bye Storm.
Bye Storm. Okay. So we're on to the discussion now. And the first thing on the agenda is the district calendar.
Yes, so there's not a whole lot of discussion at this point in time because, but I'll explain kind of what has taken place so far and maybe the timeline on this one. We, every year, meet with the teachers association as well as meeting with the groups over at Conval and Masina, superintendents over there. We have regularly been working to make sure that our calendars are in sync as much as possible. It's never perfect because we have different schools, different, you know, numbers of professional development days and so forth. But this year, we have had some input from the teachers association. We have to, before voting on this, there, you know, there's some more input that we're waiting for. But as of right now, we're going back and forth a couple of times with the schools, both Conval and Masina. If we were to adopt this calendar right here, which is very similar in concept to what our original calendar was at the beginning of this year before we changed some things up. We would align very closely with both of the schools. The one area that we differed at first within the conversations was where the February or what's typically called the February break. Sometimes people call it the winter break was going to be the calendar that the state of New Hampshire put out as a suggested calendar. Put the February break on the 28th, the first of March, second of March, third of March, and March and fourth of March. Due to, just some conversations about the importance of having people back for voting purposes between under towns. Because another one, you gotta, you know, sometimes people can elongate, make longer their, their vacations. And also just because it's a February break. The three of us are putting forward that we would have the last week in February instead. I also think it's important to not push that vacation out in a normal, quote unquote, a normal year. February break is always an important week to what I would call cleanse the school up. In typical years, we've had, you know, you see the population, the attendance rates decrease during that timeframe, then they increase again after that. And it's because people have the time to get better. Also certainly meant that's mentally as well as physically. So this is the draft and I would expect that at the next board meeting that we have, that we can adopt a calendar for next year. Certainly if you have any questions, look this over, any thoughts, any comments, this is not set in stone. Still waiting for some feedback, but wanted to make sure we had it on the agenda for you to look at.
How many snow days have we had so far?
This year?
Yeah.
Well, it's been a different year, right? So we've had one official snow day, we've had, we go by hours. So we've had a couple, what would be considered two-hour delays, maybe like three of them. One was in person and two were remote and then there were some singletons with the schools because of heating issues or things like that. But, so we're in pretty good shape. I would expect that hours-wise, we are perfectly in good shape to end that what we said, our, our calendar, what was originally 18th and graduating on that day as well. I don't see the need that we would have to go any further than that. Unless the board wanted to make sure that was the case for, we could. But we can discuss that perhaps maybe in people.
Okay. All right. So the next up then is the hockey team. The agreement.
So for this one, I'm going to patch in Heather Lindstad, activities director. Just for some background before Heather gets in here to talk about this. A couple of years back, like three years back now. We entered into a co-op, really, the board said, I think for two years, is what it was originally. The idea was with Conval, both men and women talking. And so we've been doing that, but some changes are arising. Some of it has to do with costs, some of that has to do with just the numbers of individuals in the region playing. So I'll turn it over to Heather. Heather's our activities director overseeing all athletics and activities throughout the entire district.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you to the board. Welcome Lisa, welcome Christine. Yes, it, well, we, we got through a winter season and, and we did have girls hockey this year. Unfortunately, though, the numbers for the boys for Conval and Connet weren't there. But we're seeing the numbers just in the, the area for the girls decrease a little bit more than we want. And the cost of our co-op right now is significant, more than most families can, can afford. So right now, what we're asking is if we could dissolve the co-op with Conval, although we would play next fall or next winter. The 21, 22 season, we would stay there, but we're asking to dissolve it for the following year so that we can join Keen, Menadok, Conval and ourselves. If we get permission and then what we need from you is to dissolve it now. And then, once we dissolve it, we have to approach the NHIA. Keen would do that to form a new co-op of four teams. That's not normal within the NHIA. Usually your co-op is only three teams or less, but we're not doing this to create a powerhouse. We're, we're doing this to create an opportunity for, for this, this region and allow girls to play hockey. We'd be doing this with the girls, but Conval and Connet, we're still hopeful next year that we can get the boys going and we, and there is no move right now, cage anything for the boys hockey. So again, we're asking so that we can dissolve the program for 22, 23, so that we can move to a different co-op. And financially, the, the burden would be far less. We're talking maybe from, right now it's as high as 1,800. The girls would be paying between 300 and 400 with the new co-op. For their parents, I don't think the girls are paying. And that's, that's where we're at right now.
So is Conval asking for any kind of notice?
They want to move, they're going to move with us, with the girls. So that's, that's, we're just going over there to join with the other two. So Conval and, we're actually staying with Conval, we're just all hoping to move to a better program. We just think it's in the best interest. So it's not that we're leaving them out. We would like the four and this year it proved to be fine and it worked well for the, the students at Conval and ourselves because we did end up this year playing at Keen Ice anyways because we couldn't use the Winchton Ice. So we already know that the commute or, or the change of venue is going to work for us too. So, so that didn't pose any problems either. So, and most people believe that the Keen Ice situation. Clearly, I think that that's why it's going to be better for us cost-wise too. There's just better opportunities at Keen Ice and that's where, because of COVID and we couldn't play in masks, that's why, where we had to move our, our ice time too.
Right. So, Alicia, you had your hand up and then Patty.
Um, yeah, so I'm not a very sports, athletic person. So I guess, can you help me understand what the advantage of this is? Like what is, what are we getting out of this dissolving?
Dissolving this co-op, because we're just not, it's, the numbers aren't there, Alicia, as we had hoped. So I mean, I haven't been here that long, but last year we had about 15 combined in the co-op. This year we only had maybe 10 at most for some games. Some days it was just eight or nine. So between Conval and ourselves, we just don't have the numbers. By joining that co-op, it allows our three, four, five girls to play in a team where they can have success. Where, we'll talk about the sport of ice hockey, you really can't have just a team of 10. It's almost, it's almost detrimental to them. I mean, you really can't skate and play that long. So for this, the, by making this co-op and allowing them, it's actually a better opportunity so that girls can actually have a better experience. Joining them would make it, you know, competitive on our team, but it would help us be competitive against other teams. As a co-op right now, the girls, and I will tell you, I jumped on the ice last year with them, they are dedicated to it. They don't mind, they don't want to lose 10-0, but they go to practice every day wanting to have success. So this just creates an opportunity for them to have success and be on a team. Otherwise, I think our numbers are going to continue to go in the wrong direction. I think we will pick up steam and we probably get more girls really excited about the sport. I do know that we have some younger people at J R M S, girls that are playing. And so it really gives them a better opportunity to, to have team. Whereas if we stay with this co-op, just with Conval and ourselves, I don't think we're going to be able to get the numbers that we're looking for.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Patty.
I'm, I'm just super duper excited with this idea. I mean, the Keen girls, I talked to Keen, had the first winning year this year. And they got into the semifinals and, or the quarterfinals, I'm sorry, got to check my data. But their coaches are amazing, the girls who are going to be going up and they have 12 of them right now. So there's going to be some definitely that are going to be graduating. And I just think this, to create a pipeline would be so exciting for our, for our girls to have a chance to really contribute to a new team and make new connections. I just find that really exciting and I'm so grateful that, I'm sure they've got a lot of relationship developments in the last two years behind scenes to move this forward. I just think it's a great potential. It's, I'm sorry that it's not happening. I made you crazy, it clearly, let's move on, let's do it. Not that I wanted to solve partnership, but I just want this to grow. I think it's awesome.
Thanks. Charlie, did I hear your voice?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the board members, that this isn't a normal sport. Yeah, I just wanted to say to the new board members, that this isn't a normal sport. High school sport as you know it, because it's a page to play for cone students. So the district is not contributing anything to the ice cost or uniform cost, equipment cost, anywhere.
Any other questions or comments for Heather? All right.
So Heather, I, I do have one question. So Heather, you mentioned what you need at, at the very beginning, just so that you can remind the board what it is eventually, and then what your timeline is and so forth to need, you know, the, some sort of motion.
So at this time, we need, actually need the board to, to this, to let us obviously change our, our co-op, so dissolve this co-op so that we can bring forward a new co-op and get that approved. So we can't move until you approve that it's okay to dissolve this one. We want to dissolve our co-op for the, after next year, so 21, 22, we will continue with ConVale. And then we want to have it dissolved so that we can move forward. The four schools will then have to present to the NHIAA that they'll allow us to create a new co-op that will be made up of the four schools. So the first step in this, Ruben, is yes, for the board to say that they're approving that we dissolve this co-op right now with ConVale for girls hockey. And we're not doing it for the boys at this time. Girls only.
I can, I can make a motion that we approve this in concept. But what we're going to have to have is that to modify the MOA with ConVale to remove the girls and make the boys in there. And ConVale and us are going to have to sign it. Then we're going to need a new MOA for all of the, the new schools. Okay, so, and that's going to require the signature of, of, you know, all four schools. So those are the two documents you're going to need. But I, you know, I'll make a motion now that the board agrees in concept with joining a group of, how am I going to put this? The dissolution of, well, it's more than dissolution. It's also joining with four other schools to form a new, a new team.
So what, what Charlie, you're thinking is you, you make the motion to approve the concept presented tonight about pursuing the option for a different co-op that would include the four teams. And specifically tonight, approving the dissolution of the existing co-op for the girls in ConVale. Because it can't go forward without a dissolution of.
I agree, but I think the dissolution has to come from a modification of the existing MOA.
Oh, oh, sure, sure. Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Right. So tonight, we're asking for the, to take the first step in moving towards that. Yes. Yep.
Who was it that just seconded that?
The dissolution.
Yeah, instead of this, you're saying modify the existing MOA to take out the girls. So it's, that's what it is. Yeah, bring a new MOA back to the board.
Yep. Okay, so Charlie's making a motion. Patty, you're seconding it. And the language is taking the first step towards the dissolution and the reorganization. The application for that, right?
Right.
Okay. So. Is there any more discussion? Then I'll take a roll call. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Christine.
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. I say yes as well. So 7:00, you have permission to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. It'd be great to see this work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions for Heather? All right, we're going to, I'll move back over to the attendee side.
Hi, Heather.
Bye.
Okay. Number eight on the agenda is the board committee updates. And we have the board committee organization or reorganization perhaps. So, I mean, along with this being the reorganization of the, the board, we also have the opportunity on the committees. So there are five board committees. And I guess I'm wondering, do we also, are we also going to think about communication and wellness within this?
So those are both district committees.
Right.
You could add, you know, if people were interested, they could add. I mean, currently, I think wellness, the representative was Heidi, and she agreed to stay on as a.
Community member.
But so we could realistically, you know, if there was a desire, add a board member there. And communications, I believe, was Heidi and Alicia. Heidi's again agreed to stay on as a community member for communication, but technically, I guess there's also a slot for communication should a board member be interested in wanting to join that. The other thing we consider would be manifests. Like, is there another one that's like that, that's not a committee, but has a board responsibility? Because I do know that Heidi was doing manifest, so we do need somebody to sooner than later step into that slot.
Right.
And I think, John, are you not the other person that does the best?
Yes, that's the name.
Obviously, if anybody wants to switch out on John's behalf and then find me a second.
Right. So we have five board committees, right? We have facilities, we have education, we have policy, finance, and.
Word goals.
The goals. Thank you. So I didn't know if those of us who are also on certain committees, if you might want an opportunity to say, I've had a year or two of this, I want something different. So I don't think we need to actually pass around a piece of paper tonight. But I think if we send out an email and this week, if people could say, this is my first choice, my second choice, my third choice. And then people can get, hopefully, we can get the, the choices that we want. I also like the idea that we have some community members that are working with us. I think that would be nice. Once we get the committees formed, if maybe we could look to having some other, like stakeholders involved. And also then we need to figure out who's going to chair each one and vice chair and report out all those good things. But, so rather than take up the time right now and I'll sit here and beat this out, we'll just, if people could maybe email me with their first, second, third choice. Or I can send out an email with the choices and you can just send me back what your choices are. Lisa?
When you, if there was like a Google Doc that you could put in or, or something, could you put in summaries of the boards, including the ones that are, you know, those five, summaries of the five boards and kind of goals, expectations? And then the other, the wellness and the communications and those, so we know kind of what.
Yeah, you're signing up for. I think, Nick, aren't, aren't those written on the website?
I don't know if they're directly on the website. I remember that we created a document at one point that addressed at least some basic information. I'll look for that. I'll send it to the board members.
We'll probably send it to all board members, just to be. Okay.
One thing we could try to decide tonight would be manifest. We got, you have some that are due to be signed currently. So even if we could have somebody temporarily step in and kind of do that for at least Heidi, and then if we want to readdress that, add in two new board members. So I guess, would there be anybody that could at least do it temporarily?
I can do that.
Great. Thanks, Lisa.
Have you done a report?
No, I have no clue what it is, Charlie. You know me.
Let me know.
Raise your hand, Lisa.
Let me, let me know when, I'll, I'll come and copy up.
And then the other, another point to make, just because I'm more heavily involved in this committee. If any board members do want to join the communication committee, I haven't actually set this out to the committee yet, but we will be having a meeting next Monday. So if anybody does want to be a part of that, let's try to let the, if we could get the, another person, if we want that to be the case, if we could try to get that sooner than later. And just put the copy up that we are having meeting next weekday at, I think it's 6 o'clock.
It would be nice if we could have this sorted by then. I don't think it should, this, this isn't difficult work. Just sign up.
Monday or Tuesday? Monday.
Yeah. Just and, and rank what your preference is, one, two, three, and we'll give everyone their highest preference we can. Because we can't have more than three board members on any committee. Otherwise, it changes the whole meaning of the, the meeting. So. Okay. Great. Thanks. Um, public comments?
Yeah, we're back. Again, any, any Joffrey Ridge votes that are still in the meeting, if you would like to make any sort of public comment, please just say first, last name of your town or residence. Use the hand raised future and we can address you. We got one. All right, Jennifer?
Um, so my name is Jennifer Trung. I'm from Ridge, New Hampshire. I just wanted to say it's not so much with this meeting. But during this meeting, Chronicle aired two of our teachers on it with the YouTube videos and what was happening in March and May. And it was just, it was very heartwarming that I really hope that everyone has a chance to see it and can just really respect how much effort so many of our teachers have put in during the remote and the Zoom. So. And that was it. It was just, it came on during this meeting. My daughter was shouting for me, so. I just thought it was important to share that with people, that if they have a chance to catch any of it, it was just a really wonderful program tonight.
Great. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, that's all I can say for public comments.
Okay. All right. Anything for board matters? Nope. Okay. Future items, we always have our technology update.
Yep, technology update. Met again today. We're going through and putting some timelines right now on the action items that need to be done for compliance and for improvement from the audit that we had. Again, for those of you who are new to the board, this past year, we had an audit of our technology, which got a lot broader than technology. Basically, the focus was originally on safety and security, data security and so forth. That certainly has brought into, you know, paper as well and just our practices in different departments, which has helped us. One of our action items, one I was raising my earlier, when I talked about the AM presenting the infinite visions as a piece of a much larger project that has to do with paperless storage, with, you know, paperless, basically that routing papers all over the place, different forms and so forth, to make sure that we're efficient, that we're not losing things, that we're doing the best we can to make sure they're stored safely and securely, actually, and more inexpensively. So that's a piece of it. But that's where we are in that process and we'll continue on doing that. And that will be part of our bigger five-year planning that we will be working on adopting later on this year.
All right. All right. Well, unless anyone has anything else, we've completed our agenda for tonight. All right. Thank you, John. Anyone?
No.
One second. Done. Okay. Thank you, Charlie. And we'll see you all. Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.